I'd like to call a meeting of the city council work session to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
President.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Greml?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, your honor?
Thank you, and we will decontaminate the phone afterwards, right? Okay, agenda item. Presentation discussion by Patrick Brown of D.R. Horton and Company and by Andy Barron of ABLA on cases P-21-50 MPC and P-21-51 MPC regarding the proposed rezoning of approximately 8,089 acres from general rural low-density, single-family residential, RSGR, to master planned community zoning to facilitate the development of an eight development units consisting of residential, commercial, industrial usages. The 8,089 acres is made up of two parcels. The first is approximately 2,783 acres of land auctioned by the Arizona Department of Arizona State Land Department. Messed them up here. On November 4th, 2020, where D.R. Horton was the winning bidder in the auction property case number P-21-50 MPC, and the second parcel consisting of approximately 5,306 acres, which is being retained by the Arizona State Land Department for future disposal, the retained property case number P-21-51 MPC. Property is generally bounded by Baseline Avenue on the north to Frye Road alignment on the south, and from Meridian Drive on the west to the Central Arizona Project Canal on the east. Sidney.
Sidney can kick it off there.
He thought if he stayed back there in the back, nobody'd see him.
You're trying to hide, I know.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, for the record, Sidney Rice, planner on staff. As you remember, on 9/20, city staff gave a presentation, an overview of the MPC documents. Tonight, the applicant will give an overview and then go into a little bit more detail regarding the MPC documents. I'm going to pass this to Andy Barron.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Patrick Brown, VP of Land for D.R. Horton. The address is 20410 North 19th Avenue. We are very excited to be here in front of you guys and share all the countless hours of work that our team has done, your team has done. It's been an incredible process, to be honest with you. So, we're going to go through quite a bit of detail about Superstition Vista's, how we got here, and what the plan is for the future growth. So, as you know, Superstition Vista's is 275 square miles of state land trust. It's comparable in size to Mesa, Chandler, Tempe, and Gilbert combined. It's just massive. The state trust land is not public land. It is owned by the state and it's managed it for the endowment of predominantly schools, as well as mining, is how it was set up. So, the black line property shows all of what the Superstition Vista's encompasses. What we're here to talk about tonight is both the auction property and the retained property that we're going through the process of annexing, as well as creating MPC zoning on, as well as a number of other things. Again, Superstition Vista's owned by the state trust land and is the primary beneficiaries for Arizona schools. So, had to say that twice, to be abundantly clear, as many folks don't understand the intent and the purpose of it. But it's all great, because it just helps us get more schools built, and it's, so, I don't think anything else on that one. But it's overall great for the economy, for Arizona. It was set up to help for growth and plan for future development, as you're going to see here. This has been a tireless process. We've worked with a number of institutions, as well as there's been planning efforts that's been going on, on the Superstition Vista's for over 15 years. Everyone from Magg to Queen Creek, to state, to City of Mesa, to Mesa Gateway Airport, we've met with every individual in this group that you see here, plus more. It's been a long public outreach to make sure that we understands everyone's interest and that it's all aligned, which we are pleasantly surprised to say that everyone is very supportive of the project that we're presenting in front of you. What's unique about this project versus any other project I've done from a big master plan is, within the city of Apache Junction, there's a number of districts that play an integral part of this development. You have the city of Apache Junction, the CFD, Superstition Mountains Community, CFD, the Apache Junction Unified School Districts, who we've met with. We have a Superstition Fire Medical, as well as the Apache Junction Water District. And every entity that you see here has a separate development agreement that goes along with it. Thanks to Joel and his hard work, as well as the attorneys, we are very excited to say that we have our agreements in place to be served by all of these. As I said, that there is a tireless effort for outreach, as well as a lot of vision has been going on in the Superstition Vista's area for years. ULI has been running different planning efforts out here for many, many years. We've met with East Valley Partnership, which is a major player out here. We've met with Resolution Copper, the Penau Partnership, as well as SRP for everything from water use to power and electric for the site. Again, here's the overview of Superstition Vista's. You know, we are very excited. What started with Brookfield Residential was an applicant with the Arizona State Land Department, and what the state statute allows for is that every land has to be sold by state trusts at the highest and best value. But what's also in there is a qualification piece. So, we were able to actually, the state set up that before you could submit a bid on this project, you had to demonstrate that you had the expertise to deliver large-scale master planned communities, as well as the financial capabilities to make sure that they come to life. And that's what should make the city of Apache Junction, as well as the districts, very excited that we are, we were selected because we were not only qualified, as well as we could pay the highest amount possible. It's a very unique auction, but I think it sets the stage for a lot of success. There's been a ton of work, as mentioned, by a lot of great people. Many of us still are, still very involved. And the only way you plan great master planned communities is by the team you create. And we are so proud of the team that we've created. And starting with Brookfield Residential, our partner and part of the property, as you'll learn about DU Development Unit Plan Number Two, the Arizona State Land Department and all of their trust in our abilities to deliver a world-class project, as well as the city of Apache Junction. We're all one big team. We can't forget the amazing planners and engineers, and even attorneys that worked tirelessly to make sure that this vision becomes a reality. So, who is D.R. Horton? I'm sure many of you have seen our signs, but we're known as America's builder. Over the past 19 years, no other builder has delivered America's dream to more families. We've delivered more than 830,000 homes in the past 19 years. That's remarkable. You don't have this kind of success without a diverse amount of product, and focusing on all segments of the market, from entry level to estate homes, as well as apartments. We have our own apartment brand and our own DHI commercial. So, you will see all those brands delivered upon Superstition Vista's. What I think is lost in kind of the description there is what D.R. says himself. It all starts with community. You can't sell something if people don't want to live in it. Our team is uber-focused on making sure that Superstition Vista's gels into this community of Apache Junction. We offer any of you guys to come out to any one of our communities. We'd love to tour you and be your host, as we're very excited about what we do, and I think we'd do it better than pretty much almost anyone else. The last thing I'll leave on, on D.R. Horton's is, we take extra special pride in our master planned communities. The scales of these, the scale of these projects allows us to offer really unparalleled amenity experiences and theming. Throughout the life of these projects, they often evolve. The community changes, the needs change, and that is why it's so vital to put these MPC zoning on the property. It allows us, as well as our partners, the ability to move at a second's notice to what the demand of the market is. As you can tell, I'm pretty excited about this project, or you should tell I'm pretty excited about this project. We've been bragging as a division to both the regional and corporate team that this is going to go down as our favorite master planned community, not only in Arizona, but in the entire community, entire country. And D.R. himself would tell you right now that he is, loves this project and asks about it every time I'm on the call. When's it going to get built? When are we moving dirt? I mean, I constantly get asked by, how are we doing? And I don't get asked by many projects, but this one, he's especially very interested in. So, it's pretty cool when the owner of the company is that invested as well. Our partner is Brookfield Residential. As I mentioned, they were the original applicant. They, it was kind of their brainchild with Karen Taylor Robson's, as well as some of their attorney, to do something unique, to be able to bring a big enough project to the market that it delivers the scale that you can do something really, really cool. They are a leading land developer in North America. They have two world-class master planned communities, one about a mile and a half to the west of this property called Eastmark. I can tell you, we are super excited. For probably the past five years, they've been in the top 25 best-selling master planned communities in the entire country, and we think that that same growth is coming to Apache Junction, as they're virtually sold out of lots out there. Brookfield Properties is a 80 billion capitalized company with assets from New York to all around the world. And so, very capable of delivering world-class communities and have the, and we're just can't be more thrilled to have their team as part of ours. With that, I appreciate everyone's time. Obviously, a little nervous, but super excited to be up here. And I'll turn it over to Andy Barron to really walk you through kind of the nuts and bolts of what the MPC document is and some of our thoughts on what we're about to deliver here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Andy Barron, ABLA, 310 East Rio Salado Parkway, Tempe, Arizona. So, as Patrick said, I'm going to walk you through the MPC documents this evening. But I first wanted to start by talking a little bit about master planning. The city has a fantastic tool with the MPC zoning, and that gives us a vehicle for us to be able to forward-plan a community of this scale. And when we talk about something of this scale, we have to realize that while we're entitling 27,000 units of residential and over 10 million square feet of non-residential, that won't occur just in a period of a couple of years. So, we have to have tools in our toolbox to be able to do that. And that's what these MPC documents provide, is a framework for us to be able to look into the future and have a vehicle to plan for those, the scale of a project like that. So, with that being said, I'll kind of jump into this a little bit. This gets into the local context, and I think we all kind of know where we're at, at this point. You can see on the south side of the, or I guess, plan bottom, the future SR-24 alignment. We're bound by the Central Arizona Project Canal here, and then obviously, Meridian Road on the west side. And this just kind of gives a view of, of the context of what's in and around the area. You could see that it's largely developed to the west of us. Eventually, the future expansion across the CAP canal for additional areas of Superstition Vista's to come. So, you'll note in the document that there's references to different pieces of the project itself. The site, which is reference to the entire approximate 8100 acres of land. We also have references to the auction property, which then segments it into a smaller piece of property, but creates ultimately a separate document, which is the MPC for the auction property. And then secondarily, we split it again further into another property for the retained property, which is a slightly smaller MPC document. And I'll get into the details of what the differences are on those documents here as we get further into the presentation. So, one of the things that Patrick had indicated is obviously with purchasing the property, one of the obligations was to entitle it. So, in that process, we have a commitment to annex the property, to do two development agreements for the property, establish the MPC zoning, and then in that process, we've also formed CFD districts for utility improvements, infrastructure improvements. So, as we had indicated, and Patrick did a good job of teeing that up, the auction property has been divided into two development units. And when we get into the retained property, you'll see an additional five more, or six more, development units in that property. What's colored up here is Development Unit One on the left is D.R. Horton, and Development Unit Two on the right will be Brookfield. And generally, the acreage is split in half, and that's kind of what's represented here on the graphic. One of the processes that we have established in here is what we call a development unit plan. And the idea behind this is to schematically define where certain uses would be proposed. So, in this graphic, you'll note up on the top, there is development parcels, commercial, park areas, community parks, civic space, and then some designations for linear areas of parks and open space, and then collector and arterial roadways. Ideally, you know, this map is conceptually placing those elements based on what we were planning at the time. And for the most part, in the D.R. Horton portion here, what we're showing is actually what we have been moving forward with. We're in, pre-plats been submitted for this entire southern area, and we're currently working on improvement plans for this initial phase here. But what we've done in this document, and I'll get into it when we start talking about the land use budget, is allocated areas where we believe commercial property makes the most sense, and that's shown in these sort of red-orange circles on the intersections of Ironwood and Elliott, and intersections of Ray and Ironwood. And similarly, throughout there, potential locations for parks improvements, these radii showing the walking distances from those amenity spaces. So, industry standard typically is a five-minute walk. Secondarily standard is a 10-minute walk, and that's what these circles are representing, is a very well-programmed, park-connected type of community. And you'll note that throughout the document, that there's a lot of focus put on creating open space and connectivity throughout these master planned areas. We've also shown potential locations for public facilities. So, in this location up here, we do have a potential location for a school, library, and police station. We've worked obviously hand and glove with the parks folks and school, and lots of discussion on a library that could be located in this area in the future. The area that traverses this project is what we call the power line floodway channel or drainage meant, and that will become a trail corridor that ultimately will connect to the CAP area through this project and a portion of the retained property. So, similarly, if we flip over to the Brookfield plan, you'll see a lot of the same type of symbols and diagrammatic elements where there's potential for a commercial located here at this corner of Ray and Ironwood as well, and similarly, along the corridor of Elliott and Ironwood. You'll note that there are district parks shown, so that definition lives within the MPC. And then again, potential for other public facilities, with an elementary school potentially located here, and a fire station located off of Warner Road. So, you'll see that this planning, the intent here is to say, these uses may live in this location, and the MPCs themselves establish the standards and the criteria for how that would be developed. And we're going to get into that here a little bit. So, within that multi, the master planned zoning itself, we have established land use budget. And that criteria is divided out based on acreage. We establish a minimum open space requirement, which is noted here. And then within the document, there's dialogue about how the open space should be programmed, what should be provided for in that open space, et cetera. We do talk about the units. So, each of these development units is allocated 5,470 units, for a total of 10,940 between these two development units. And then when we get into the retained property, there's a separate land use budget for that property as well. It gets into some transfer, which I won't get into unless there's questions about it. And that has to do with the ability to move units around more meaningful in the retained property, as we're not 100% sure where the state land will sell first, and whether or not there may be a need to transfer units or non-residential intensity based on the type of user that may come in and develop there. So, with that, we also have allocated non-residential area of 443,000 square feet, and that represents those different circles that we were talking about on this plan, that it could be allocated on these corners between the two development units. And then the residential obviously lives in all the yellow area. So, within this regulatory overview, within this land use budget, everything is measured against this table. So, as development occurs, we have to do an accounting process to show how we're utilizing the residential units throughout this development, as well as the non-residential intensity throughout the development, so that we don't exceed what our master studies will allow us to develop. So, within that, there is a series of different documents and text that establish criteria that regulate the land use budget, as well as the development of the master plan itself. So, not to get too complicated, and I'll try to keep this as simple as possible, because there is a bit of complexity. But the master planned community plan, imagine that as a high-level macro view of the project. So, if we were to look at these bubbles again, you know, it's really kind of regulating at this level, okay? And what it's establishing is a land use budget, the criteria at which it can be used, how amendments are processed, how applications are filed in the future for site plans, pre-plats, things of that nature. When we look at, oops, I went too far, the development unit plan, that starts to define a little bit more granular detail about where the roadway networks will live, how the trails will function on those roadway networks, where the major open space may be located. That's a, that's a more specific defined level of detail. And then when we look at the development standards and design guidelines, since our development unit plan is diagrammatic, it's showing potentially where residential will occur, potentially where the parks may occur, where the commercial may occur, the development standards and the guidelines provide the more detailed criteria that we have to be able to design against. That effectively gives staff a resource, a tool, to be able to review our site plans and metals and our preliminary plats. So, through the regulatory process, there is a check and balance in a very significant document that we've spent a lot of time with staff on, as I'm sure you've heard, in creating, you know, 300 pages worth of requirements and checks and balances that would be reviewed as we submit applications for site plans and pre-plats. So, and that gets into all levels of detail, from how we lay out street networks within the neighborhoods, how open space is connected, what the architecture looks like, how the architecture would be reviewed, to the extent that there's requirements for storm drainage and parking and lighting. We've really spent a lot of time making sure that we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's in the document itself. So, with that, there are other elements in here that help define some basic parameters that will allow the macro level of design to then help drive the more specific granular site plans and pre-plats. And that's what you're seeing here, is this starts to get into the basics of trails networks, of where those major corridors would lie, and then there's criteria established within the development standards and design guidelines that talk about how we connect to that, what the widths of those trails are, how they would be landscaped, and so on, and what types of materials could be utilized. Same for the parks concepts. What you're seeing here again is sort of a diagram of where we believe the parks would be located, but where we define a park type, there's a minimum acreage required, a minimum level of program required, and a minimum level of landscape that would be part of that area, so that folks that are living within that vicinity of a neighborhood, that they have quick access to recreation, that they have the ability to go places with their kids, and a network of parks and open space that connects the communities together. When we talk about the roadway infrastructure, and I'll get to the master plans in a second, but this, this is a very basic diagram that shows the primary roadway networks that were established as part of the traffic impact analysis for the property itself. Within that, as we subdivide and create smaller neighborhoods, the street networks will connect to this major infrastructure that's shown here. So, you'll see, for instance, that the Ironwood is shown as a six-lane arterial. Ray is shown as, as an ultimate six-lane arterial as well, but this development would be constructing only the half-street improvements of that. So, I'm certain when you thumb through the document, you saw that there are street sections in there that show the level of improvements that would be done with the development itself that basically support what was been defined and described within the traffic impact analysis itself. That's a good segue into master plans. So, all of the land use budget, and what we're showing here is the entire retained and auction properties, so the site. And what this is showing is all the infrastructure required from a backbone perspective to be able to support the units and non-residential gross floor area that we have proposed between the two properties. This allows us to be able to come in This allows us to be able to come in and develop through smaller development unit plans and applications to show conformance to these master plans against the land use budget. If we were to come in and have 500 units of development that would occur within this development unit one, you know, we would have a design report that would accompany that that shows conformance to this master plan. So in each one of these, we have for water wastewater, we have a non-potable water master plan as well, and then the traffic drainage as well, and then the traffic impact analysis, which I didn't include in this presentation because it's basically the same diagram that we had shown previously. So important to note that those master studies are for both the retained and the auction property, and that as property is disposed of through future auctions, for the retained property, there would be updates performed to that where necessary, or additional design reports provided based on the application for that. So as we get into the retained property, just a slightly different look, and I'll try to describe the nuances and be happy to answer any questions that may come up. So of the 8,090 acres, we're talking about 5,306 plus or minus, we round up to 5,307 for convenience of math, which is shown here, and it kind of, you can see it's kind of a little sawtooth shape that's left out here. And off to the side, you can see the areas of the property, not pristine desert by any means, but generally fairly flat and prime for development, for sure. As I had stated previously, this is also divided into development units. The intent here is for us to be able to define clear boundaries where it makes sense to have logical transitions in land use. So when I talk about that, what I mean is that when we look way down on the bottom of the page, we have the future alignment of the SR24, which obviously is under construction today, hopefully will still be open this year to Ironwood, I hope. It looks like they're on track.
Yeah, somewhere they should be there for jump Ironwood.
Yeah, so part of what we're talking about here is that in our land use budget, we have assigned higher density of residential and higher intensity of non-residential as we get closer to the freeway. And that makes sense from a transitional land use perspective. So as we move to the north, the density starts to decrease, the non-residential intensity starts to decrease as well. So when we think about the transition from the auction property with its plus or minus 10,000 units, you know, as we move closer to the freeway, we expect that the residential densities will likely increase, and the non-residential intensity will increase because of the exposure the freeway provides. As we move to the north, it's generally a fairly opposite thought process because we have established existing non-residential uses by the way of industrial or office or something else. So we have allocated floor area that we believe would likely become future development for office or industrial further to the north. So as we look at this, and we don't know exactly which piece of land will be auctioned in the future, the intent here was for us to be able to, with our best assumptions and our best thoughts, of what makes the most sense for us to be able to plan for. And you'll see that in the land use budget. So as we look at the land use budget, we have an additional, and it's way off to the right over here, my right, I guess probably your right too, 16,500 plus or minus units, nine and a half million square feet of non-residential gross floor area. So what we've done in this plan is, again, tried to find logical places to create the development units using roadway alignments, as it makes sense for us to say that road's probably not going to move, that it's probably the right place for us to create that division. However, we did want to build flexibility in for the state land to be able to auction off different pieces of the property, in case they have a user that wants something larger, in case they have a user that needs something slightly smaller, but it's still desirable to do. That's why we have the ability to transfer land area and units between those development units themselves. That provides, again, that master planning forethought that I mentioned, that none of us have the ability to see into the future that far and know exactly what needs to be done, we've really kind of built this in for something that's ultimately flexible with the level of constraint that's supported by the master studies. So that traffic impact analysis, the master water and sewer, the wastewater, the stormwater, all of that is based on these numbers here and is supported by the master studies. So what does that look like as a land use plan? Well, this is our land use plan, and what we've done, and I can't read it because it's like microscopic, but we have, it's a little fuzzy for this guy. But what we've done is we've taken and graphically represented how much non-residential gross floor area and how much residential would live in each one of these development units as we see it today, and again, supported by the master studies. So what's important to note, and when I say non-residential gross floor area, know that that could be commercial, it could be office, it could be mixed use, it could be industrial, anything that's not residential could be this gross floor area. So what's different in this one? Well, the biggest thing that's different is the fact that the development unit plan is somewhat undefined. And I'll go back quickly and explain that. So the master plant community plan, it's a tongue twister to say that, is the same thing. We're really kind of looking at that macro view. How do we provide regulatory framework that gives us detail on the number of acres within a development unit and the number of units and non-residential intensity? That's the macro level. Then we start talking about how we may process amendments in the future, how those transfers may work, that's what's in the MPC plan itself. When we talk about the development unit plan, we have no idea at this point in time what would be developed in development unit three, for instance. And because we don't know that, the development unit plan within the retained property actually describes the criteria for a future applicant to create its own separate development unit plan that would be like the one I showed earlier. And for lack of a better description, I'm going to go back and just show this one more time, that this is truly the development unit plan as an example. And because we don't have an end user, we don't have D.R. Horton, we don't have Brookfield, we don't have a big commercial developer, we have to be able to define criteria that give staff, the city, the state assurance that there's a path forward here in terms of development. And that's this development unit plan. So when an applicant comes in, they purchase development unit three, they'll provide the level of detail that has all of these elements in it, so transportation, drainage, water, wastewater, they're going to have to update all of those based on what their proposal is. Now, we've allocated a bucket of units and non-residential area for each of these. If they decide to change that, then they would provide that information within their development unit plan. And similarly, because we don't know if they're developing commercial or office or industrial, we establish criteria where they have to provide more detail on development standards and design guidelines for their proposed uses, okay? So what that means is that this document that's smaller, in this case, when a development unit comes in, it will turn into a document like this. So, but the good news is there's a good go-by, there's an example, there's a path forward, there's something to follow, okay?
So, Andy, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the map with the different development units?
Sure.
So with DU4, because that's so poised to the SR24, which will then lead into the 202 and the airport and all of that, I really see that as a hopeful potential jobs corridor area. So if something like a Nikola, Tessa, you know, one of these big-name companies came in, they can purchase that then, and then whatever's scheduled in terms of development of units, I think it's 2,700 units there, can actually be moved into different areas. We can move this, manipulate it any which way we want to grow how, like you said, in any way.
Councilmember Biggs, great observation, yes. There are provisions, there are limitations, you know, because we have to make sure that we're cognizant of not putting too much intensity or too much density in one location. So we've kind of made that cap at 30%. So 30% of the gross floor area, 30% of the residential could be moved to another development unit. But to answer your question directly, if you had a high-tech user like that come in, specifically on DU4, the way that the standards are set up right now, they could purchase a development unit, we have the floor area, we have the yield set aside, the master studies support it, they would just have to provide the detail in a development unit plan and the development standards and design guidelines to move that forward.
So would I be correct in an understanding through all of the development units that there's the potential for 27,000 rough homes essentially, or residential units, that if we had a big company like that come in and start buying up bigger pieces of land to develop, that may not actually happen, that we're going to end up with 27,000 residential units? It may look vastly different because there's an economic base there.
Councilmember Biggs, another great observation. So that's the beauty of master planning, is that we're effectively trying to read a crystal ball. And, you know, what we've done, as we've said, we have this level of infrastructure through all the master studies and utilities, sewer, water, drainage, stormwater, you know, wastewater, and on top of that, the traffic elements, that we can do 27,000 units and 10 million square feet of non-residential. However, that could change. And the way that this is drafted is that there are provisions to process amendments to be able to come in, that we've defined what minor amendments are versus what are major, you know, and if there were an increase in residential yield or non-residential gross floor area, those are major amendments that would come back through to this council for a review in the future. But the goal here is for us, based on our expertise, our experience in the marketplace, what we've seen over the, for, I won't say how long I've been doing this, for a long time, that the development world infinitely changes based on market conditions. And what we've done through this master planning process, in a project that could effectively take 50 years to develop, created really a tool that allows things to adjust based on market conditions, and a big user or small user. None of us really know exactly how things will develop over time, but we have a tool and a resource that gives us the flexibility to adapt.
Thank you.
You bet. So a couple of things to consider, and you probably noted this within the MPC documents themselves, that there are a fair amount of elements within the general plan conformance as well as stormwater about sustainability. And I think it's important for us to spend just a minute here talking about all of the things that will be built into the auction property and effectively required for description within the retained property as a future development unit plan comes in. So thinking about those building technology elements with Energy Star, smart programmable systems, you know, low-flow toilets, and we understand that water is a very important resource and that we have to be smart about that, to the extent that this project, you know, there will be no turf in front yards. We've really kind of taken that to heart, where we do have turf, it has to be programmable, usable turf areas for the community to be able to utilize and have recreation elements. We spent a lot of time on lighting, so the dark sky elements are built very, very heavily into this project. We've effectively drafted our own lighting ordinance in here to ensure that we have dark sky features within the community itself. Transportation through bike corridors, trails, the placemaking with the elements of wayfinding and parks, and, you know, shade is always a big element that we run into, and we're really trying to be forward-thinking about all of those features. And you'll see that that's really kind of been baked into this document, and it's something that the entire team, development team, design team, wholeheartedly has focused on in the development of these two documents. And then just a couple of things to note, you know, as I mentioned, the turf is something that we're really kind of paying special attention to. And you'll note that the landscape will be attractive, desert-oriented, but where we do have turf, that it's meaningful and useful, shade is abundant, and we just had a couple images here, kind of inspiration. It was always fun to end on some colorful photos rather than listen to me talk about design standards and land use budgets, but, you know, this is going to be an active community with a whole lot of residents and families, and I think, as Patrick had said, it's a fantastic addition to help Apache Junction grow, and we're excited to be part of it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone got any questions?
No.
The book was a great read.
I would say thank you, because I spent a lot of time on it.
Tess?
I just have a couple. They're not so much questions as they are observations. I'm going to presume that the development standards and design guidelines are in compliance with the AJ, the city's existing ordinances, because we don't want anybody up here saying that we're being lax down there, or something like that. Am I correct? That'll be, that's all been worked with the city?
Councilmember Nester, we have worked extensively with staff, and I could look this way and hopefully get some nodding heads, but we have, where code didn't have a lot of criteria, we established criteria where things needed to change because of different engineering practices, staff was accommodating. So there are things that are slightly different, but only because it's practical and makes sense, to the extent that certain things are being modified in code for everything south of Baseline Road. So there are things that are different, but they're being changed in code as well.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Park characteristics. I know when I went to one of the open houses, I mentioned this, or it was mentioned. I don't remember the exact plans from that meeting, but what was talked about was not doing golf courses because they're kind of, the potential for future families, that's not a thing anymore, having golf courses. And I remember we brought up about building down there a dog park and a nice splash pad and stuff like that. Is those kind of some of the intentions?
Councilmember Nester, yes. We're not planning on any golf courses that I'm aware of. Golf courses in today's market definitely are far less than what I used to do 20 years ago. You know, they're limited, ADWR regulations are quite strict, the water use is pretty extensive, it's fairly difficult these days to do unless you've got abundance of gray water. So, and that's somewhat difficult to come by at times as well. So the idea with these parks within the auction property specific is neighborhood-focused. So while I can't say exactly where that dog park will be or where a splash pad will be, that is a provision built into, it's a design option that we have, and it is something that I know our team is looking at, I know the Brookfield team is as well. So these are family-focused, you know, amenities, meant to be connected between neighborhoods so that the residents have the ability to experience different types of parks within their communities themselves.
You already mentioned the dark sky, so the last thing I've got then is, did I miss it, or is there nothing here for any industrial areas?
Councilmember-
Other than that, that blue area down at the-
Well, I guess, again, this is me being presumptuous, and I mean, I guess I'm going to speculate a little bit here at the risk of Mark Edelman not liking what I'm saying, but there's a chance that the industrial likely will occur further to the north, because it's already an existing land use that's there, it's established, it makes sense for a logical transition. I would be surprised if industrial made any meaningful presence along the SR24. I don't think Bryant would let us do that. He's quiet.
Mr. Mayor-
Krista, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Rizzi asked me to ask a couple of questions. Her voice isn't doing too well, but she is listening, so she texted me and Bryant some questions. One, Andy, could you address how, if there's anything you can share about schools, the school system? We know the property is within the district, so they'll benefit from those property tax dollars, but are there any ideas yet about how the school system will be, district schools, charter schools? It may be too early to tell, but that's one question she had. And then she asked, just to address a little bit more about commercial opportunities throughout for these residents, you know, to keep some of those tax dollars here local.
Yeah, fair question. So the school district, that's one of the entities that our development team met with, and we actually have a letter that they're, you know, satisfactory and have capacity to serve the students as a part of the auction property itself. But you'll note that we're showing potential future school locations because we don't know if that will always be the case, you know? And I think that that's sort of the point, is that we've reserved potential locations for it on both development units, so there is one shown here on development unit one in the north, and then development unit two also has one potentially shown here. Could it be a charter? Sure. Do we know for sure right now? We really don't. So, and I think that's something that will kind of play out as development occurs. Schools generally come in after the development's established so that there's time for students to be generated. Obviously, they don't come before the students are there. So that's one item. Specific to commercial-
Before we leave the schools, I just want to make sure it's abundantly clear for the community and for our council. This area is, unlike us annexing an area, school boundaries and district boundary property tax authority, it already exists. In fact, the area goes all the way to Jermaine Road for AJUSD. So all of the property owners, as it moves into private holdings, will begin the process of paying property taxes, and AJUSD will be the school district.
Andy, to add to that as well, with those properties, I assume that the district, or any school for that matter, would have to purchase the land to then build a school. Is that correct?
Councilmember Biggs, that's typically- Councilmember Biggs, that's typically the case, and I believe that, you know, at this point, that would be the assumption.
So, operating under that assumption, then, would our school district have first right of refusal before a charter school or anybody were to be able to come in and buy that land?
I'm not equipped to answer that question.
Tag, you're it.
Councilmember Biggs, I think the answer is we're, we're just not there far enough to understand where schools are going, even the interest of charters today. What we do know is Apache Junction Unified School District has abundance of capacity. And so right now, they're not in a position to move forward on trying to, even if we donate at a site, to actually build a new school. I think they're still trying not to shut more schools down. So they're excited about the additional students that'll hopefully start filling them up, and then they'll give them an ability to actually come in and get a school site here. But I think both Brookfield and D.R. Horton lines of communication are very open. Actually, we've met with the, the new superintendent, Karen Taylor Robson actually is working, helping to set up a, he, kind of integration with Helios, where they helped try to talk about different ways to, to teach. And so those dialogues are going well, and they will stay open, is what I'll tell you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is the fiscal impact analysis that we had done for the property indicates that approximately a hundred and twenty-five million dollars will be generated for the school district over the course of a twelve-year time horizon. So there will be significant revenues, as, as the city manager pointed out, that will be generated, that will accrue to the benefit of the school district.
So I'm going to follow up, Matt, on the commercial.
Commercial, yeah.
See? I didn't forget. I even wrote it down. So for commercial development, I think maybe one of these bigger graphics is better to point to. And I think it's important to note that with the twenty-four opening to Ironwood and what that means for the potential of commercial development, obviously, we had some commercial planned potentially on this intersection on both sides of Ray and Ironwood, and again, on both sides of Elliott and, and Ironwood. Specific to the auction property, I would say that as soon as traffic starts getting there, I wouldn't be surprised if, if Patrick and/or Brookfield already have interest to, to have commercial development there, because there isn't a lot over there at this point. Oh, go ahead, Patrick.
Mayor, members of the council, the one thing I will add is DHI does have a commercial entity, and they would love to actually start marketing the site. We actually already experienced an LOI from Circle K that we told them that we can't execute yet, but there is interest in here with the growth, and Ironwood being such a heavily-traveled road, I think we're going to have commercial here a lot faster than what you would anticipate.
Patrick, can you clarify for the record, DHI, is that your arm for commercial, or?
Yes, so our entity is DR, so it's DHI is D for DR, Horton, Horton, Inc. Is so, when you, when we say DHI, a lot of, that, that is our parent company name.
So that's the group that'll be looking for commercial pieces, yeah? And we always-
We are talking to them constantly. The big thing is, there's a lot of infrastructure to get built, as you guys have seen from these maps. I mean, five miles of, of just Forest Main to, to get sewer from all the way south, all to, to the water rec facility. So that infrastructure's got to be there so that fries or whoever would come down there can know that they can actually build and get up and running. So, once we get the infrastructure there, we will shortly be starting to market the site.
So, Patrick, that brings up a good point in terms of building the infrastructure. How big of a mess are we going to be looking at on Ironwood for the next ten years?
Hopefully not long. I can tell you, Councilmember Biggs, we're hoping to have all this work up and running, and so that we are closing homes in January of twenty-three, or, or opening our models in January of twenty-three. So, Ironwood absolutely is going to be under construction, but our intent is to do kind of, at least from Ironwood to Warner and one chunk, and then Warner to, so it will be a phased approach. I mean, there's, there's no ways to get about it, but I, I think it's going to be a lot of work for about a year, and then hopefully you're going to see, see the work kind of stop for a while.
Another important note is that SR twenty-four connection to Ironwood Road should complete, I, I believe in about another year or two. We just, is it next summer, or?
Next summer, so I'm, I'm saying just under eleven months.
That's what we're hoping. Yeah, so they're, they're really cranking away for that connection, so that'll take a lot of that heavy traffic straight over to the, the two oh two. Of course, Ironwood will still be heavily utilized, there's no doubt.
And while we had Patrick up, the Vice Mayor had asked about large lot properties, and over the last few months, that was a question that came up, even horse properties and, and, and significance related to these first four square miles as it relates to two hundred and seventy-five square miles of state land, and even the twelve square miles that are within the city limits. Patrick, do you want to address, like, the idea of large lots eventually, and maybe how it's not going to be there just yet in the first four?
Yeah, so, so I think, again, it's, it's why the MPC document is so important. That zoning allows a lot of flexibility to go from everything to apartments to large lots. And, and so really, it's going to be what the market bears. If the market tells us that there's more of a need for large lot or horse-type property, then obviously, we're going to go try to fill that void. Right now, I don't know if it's, if it's there right, there yet. You start looking at kind of Eastmark, and it's a perfect example. I think they have their largest lots are, what, ninety foot by probably a hundred and thirty approximately? Jeff, do you know? It's pretty close. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty large lot. That's probably a quarter, almost a quarter of an acre. So, do I think you're going to get the two-acre properties? Probably not here, but I could also see it happening in this development unit here, where there's much more drainage influences, and so you could do larger lots in this kind of development unit as well. As the cap canal trail corridor gets developed, if there's horse riding, there's, we've mentioned a couple of times, like Horse Lovers Park by Reach eleven, it's a great example of what this could kind of turn out for the city of Apache Junction. Then you could start seeing a pocket of horse property that's close enough to getting into those trail corridors. So, I, I think it's really going to be land use-based and what the market will bear.
Okay. Does she have any other questions?
We don't have anything, well, we have, yeah, we have Sidney up here in a little bit, but.
Matt, did I address councilmembers?
Yes, Vice Mayor Rizzi's question. Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay. Happy to answer any other questions.
Anyone else? Well, I say thank you, and we're looking forward to all of this and working with you. And we're, we're all excited up here, I know we are, and looking forward to, I'll say, the expansion and the development.
I think we echo that a hundred percent, so thank you all. Your staff has been amazing to work with, so.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. We'll move on to presentation discussion on public hearing items to be considered on October fifth. Sidney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sidney Rice, planner on staff. Tonight is really just an overview of the items that you will be formally considering tomorrow evening. If, if you've looked at tomorrow's agenda, it's a bit long in terms of the public hearing. We have grouped the public hearings into three public hearings. The first public hearing will cover the annexation and the entitlements for the auction and retained property, and the slight engineering modifications that the development team has asked for. That will cover public hearing number one. Public hearing number two will cover the development agreements, both for the auction and retained properties. Public hearing number three will cover the CFD portion of, of the project. You may have noticed that there, there are more than nine items on your agenda for the public hearings, and that is because some of the items that are listed here have either two ordinances or an ordinance and resolution that will require separate votes. That is all I have for you tonight.
Sidney, could you explain just for everyone why you, why we were kind of categorizing these three? Is there some?
Sure, of course, Brian. So, for example, public hearing number one, of course, the MPCs go together, but this, the MPCs would not happen without the annexation. And because of the MPCs, the development team has asked for very slight modifications for the engineering standards. So that's why that is, those, those items are grouped together. So, and clearly, the development agreements go together, and then for the public hearing, that information goes together as well. So it's just a matter of organization, really.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as Sidney alluded to, there'll, there'll be thirteen items to vote on, even though we've grouped them in these different public hearings, as he explained, but they will be thirteen, I think it's thirteen different votes.
Correct, Matt. So an example of that, Mayor and Council, is for the annexation, we have ordinance fifteen fifteen. Ordinance fifteen fifteen is the actual annexation. Ordinance fifteen sixteen gives you an equivalency zoning, so it takes the, it goes from county zoning to city zoning, RSGR. And then, and then your second item here for the auction MPC, ordinance fifteen thirteen gives it the master plan zoning entitlement. And of course, the resolution makes the MPC document a public document. So that is why multiple volts are needed for some of the items in front of you.
So, Jennifer, I actually just want to clarify, at least for the first three motions for tomorrow, we'll be doing the reading by title only, and then we just have to move whatever ordinance as read by you, correct? We're not doing much more beyond that for the first three, it looks like.
For the ordinances, everything will be the same. Motion by title, and then a motion on the main ordinance itself. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're, we're going to be making a lot of motions tomorrow because I-
There are thirteen.
Yeah.
But doesn't include the second motion on the ordinances.
Okay.
So there are thirteen items that will need motions, and then the ordinances basically have the double motions.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor and Council, my presentation is broken up into these three public hearings. So after public hearing number one is done, then you are open to provide motions on those items.
Your Honor, tomorrow night will be historic. Something that many of you have seen in visions and in discussions in this community for many years, even decades. A couple of you have asked me to reach out to former council members, former mayors, former board supervisors, former leaders in this community. Unless I hear differently, I'm going to be making some phone calls to just invite and encourage those that can to be here. I hope that's okay, Mayor. I see you hadn't had a chance to touch base with you, but the matter, this item, to decree to say it's significant is an understatement. It's a changer. And so we're, we'll invite former mayors, I, I don't know how many we can get, but we'll start that process, and I'll make phone calls tomorrow on that. It sure is an exciting time.
It is. I was wondering if Lisa Atkins was going to be here tomorrow. Is she, do you know?
Do we know that? I'm, I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, yeah.
Yes, okay, well, good.
So, yes.
Glad to see her here. And had an opportunity to have a short speak with her the other day, and her statement to me was, we're all getting excited for this opportunity that's coming up. So, and we are. All right? Anything else for meaning of the council? I'll call the meeting closed. Thank you.